Okay, welcome everybody to the 4pm joint work session for the Ogden City Council and redevelopment agency. We have all council members present and in the room. Just a quick review of our agenda this evening at six o'clock. We have some minutes, council member Chaburka and council member Graff, you've got those. A consent item. And reports from administration on amendments to the diversity commission ordinance and proposed joint resolution adopting the community engagement charter. And public comments, and then we will consider a journey into a closed session. Any questions or discussion on the agenda for this evening? Okay.
Slow, too slow.
Too slow, here we go.
Um, who's presenting on the diversity commission ordinance?
Linda, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay. And then for our work session, council member Graff, we were gonna see if we could reorder the agenda a little bit and push and discuss the redevelopment agency items and then get to the, get to the Leicester Park piece. If that's okay, we're considering just reordering the agenda just slightly in this and having the redevelopment agency pieces and then we'll get to, we'll go to the, the council member initiative, that's okay, okay. So up first, we'll invite Kathy Fuentes and Jeremy Smith in the room, maybe not Jeremy. Or he was, huh, coming, he'll be joining us shortly hopefully. We are going to talk about, oh wait, is this right? Did I, did I jump the gun? The five-year consolidated plan, that's it, yeah, okay, sorry. Two bullet points fooled me for a minute. You're on, oh, we gotta turn you, turn the microphone on there, there you go.
Hi everyone, thank you for your time today to consider our HUD plans. I'm Kathy Fuentes, Senior Community Development Coordinator. And this is Jeremy Smith, Community Development Division Manager, thank you for your time today.
Can I just take one second, sorry, my, I mean, perfect timing.
Yeah, that's good.
I just wanted to say, you know, first of all, thank you for letting us come and talk to you about the consolidated plan process. This is the first of several meetings we'll be having over the next few months. Everything that we talk about today has to do with our federally funded projects, so you may wonder why we don't spend a bunch of time talking about things like the help program, volunteer partnerships, some of the other things that we do in community development. That's because those programs are not federally funded. So the numbers that you'll see, the funds as well as the goals that are set are primarily just dealing with these federally funded projects. Community development does a lot of other things as well, so just wanted to clear that up because there's always some questions out on us, I thought you guys did more stuff, and we do. They're just, not, not all of it is federally funded, and that's really what the con plan is dealing specifically with, with those funds and what we use them for, so Kathy's done a great job of putting this together. I want to give her some props, Kathy's been with the city for 25 years and has been running point on this process with HUD for pretty much the entire time, so she's one of the reasons we've been able to stay in compliance, probably the main reason. And be able to check the boxes, which is a tedious painful process every year. And I don't, just want to recognize that because it's a kind of a thankless job and really is a lot of effort, so we appreciate her having her on the team and just need her to stick around another 25 years and we'll be set, so with that, I'll turn the timer to Kathy and take it away, thanks.
All right, thank you Jeremy, all right, our agenda today is a discussion on the five-year consolidated plan. The annual action plan, which is the first year implementation plan of that five-year plan. The draft of our citizen participation plan for our HUD programs. The analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and the next steps in our HUD plan process. So the five-year consolidated plan is the mechanism in which the city gets, receives HUD entitlement funds, along with the con plan, the city is required by HUD to prepare a citizen participation plan. An analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. And a priority needs assessment, which is in the con plan. And then the five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan, which implements that first year of the five-year plan and then a neighborhood revitalization strategy area is an optional report that we can submit. So for the five-year annual action plan, it is the application for the city to renew its entitlement status for the community development block grant and the home investment partnerships grants, which we call the home grant. It's a strategic planning tool to identify and prioritize the city's housing, community development and economic development needs. It outlines what the city plans to do with HUD funds for the next five years. And it requires citizen participation and outreach. And if it's not in the con plan, then HUD funds cannot fund it, but an amendment to the con plan is required to make a significant change to programs, budgets, or beneficiaries. So the five-year plan sets the stage of what we can do with our HUD funding. So these are the CDBG entitlement core goals. The community development block grant entitlement program provides annual grants on a formula basis to entitlement cities and urban counties to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment and by expanding economic opportunities principally to low to moderate income persons. So this program is established by law. Okay, and then the HUD con plan has three CDBG national objectives. So every activity must fall under one of these categories. It must benefit low to moderate income persons. It must be to prevent, eliminate slum and blight or to address an urgent need. At least 70% of our expenditures have to benefit low to moderate income persons. The 30% can benefit slum and blight or an urgent need. These are categories established from the HUD, they're actually printed in the HUD manual, these are the categories that are eligible activities for CDBG. Some of the categories may seem a little strange, like a loss of rental income, that is not like a tenant-based rental assistance program. That's more in terms of if the city was doing a lot of relocation, like an eminent domain project and relocation was required and we needed a landlord to hold an apartment for us and only, it was only going to be rented 10 months out of the year, that loss of rental income could be covered by this program to allow him to cover, to hold that apartment for us in the need of another relocation activity, we've never had to use that. But, um, so some of the categories do require a little bit of explanation, but those are the main categories. So they, these are the eligible activities, but they still have to meet that national objective of benefiting low mod income people or removing slum and blight. So this is a review of the last 20 years of the different types of programs that Ogden City has funded and the priority objectives. So the con plan is structured by the priority objectives, we go through a public outreach process and we establish our priority objectives for the con plan. So to provide decent affordable housing, we have the HUD-funded quality neighborhoods program, which is housing, rehab and new construction, and that can be CDBG and our home funded. We have the emergency home repair program, which is CDBG funded. We had an owner occupied housing rehab program. Our last project was in 2007. We had a rental rehabilitation loan program, that last project was in 2007. And then we had an asset control area program, which was CDBG and home funded, which discontinued in 2018. And then the next priority objective is expand homeownership opportunities where we have the own-in-Ogden down payment assistance program, homebuyer education, and at one point we had a homeownership loan program, which was home funded and discontinued in 2008. And then we have the priority objective of homelessness prevention and we have the tenant-based rental assistance program with supportive services, which is currently going, ongoing. Another priority objective is improve the physical appearance and safety of neighborhoods. We have the target area public improvements, which is CDBG funded. And we had code enforcement, which was CDBG funded and ended in 2014. And then we had the priority objective remove slum and blight. We had a demolition loan program, which was CDBG funded and ended in 2008. And then we had slum blight spot basis removal, and that ended in 2000. So those are the community development priority objectives. And then under economic development, we had stimulate economic growth. We have a small business loan program, which is CDBG funded. Special economic development projects, which is CDBG funded, and we had the business information center, which was CDBG funded and ended in 2023. Well, ended in 2022, the last expenses went through in 2023. And then a section 108 loan projects, which was CDBG funded. We have the priority objective, create greater access to capital, which is our micro enterprise loan program, which is loans and technical assistance to micro enterprises. And then we have the priority objective, expand the city's economic base through the development of underutilized properties. And under that, we have the 25th Street Building Rehabilitation and Facades Program, which the last project was in 2007. And then we have the Central Business District infill and revitalization projects, which ended in 2016. So those are the priority objectives over the last 20 years and the projects that have been CDBG funded. Any questions on those or?
I do have a question. There's a lot of them that are discontinued. What's, what's going on with all the discontinued things, can you explain? Like, for instance, code enforcement, you know, those kind of things, what's? Did they just decide they don't, they're not gonna cover that anymore, or we just not want to use it for that, or? I can, yeah, I think I can address that, so some of these were ideas that were started and were eligible, code enforcement's a good example. And was funded a lot with CWG. HUD is always changing, I shouldn't say always, but continually to change and give new guidance and things that they require. At that point in time, the requirements that they changed for, for code enforcement didn't line up with the way we did code enforcement and it became problematic. So they decided to separate those funds from block grant and just use a traditional funding for that. A lot of them are just there wasn't enough money to do everything, right, so this, we basically received the same entitlement grant since the program started over 20 years ago, and so as everyone knows, everything, if you get the same amount, I mean, anyone's been in the grocery store recently can say it's just costs a lot, you can do little. You can't do as much as you used to be able to do, and so we're, we're at that point where there are things that had to be discontinued and that's just kind of happened over time. Our buying power is, is diminished and so we've had to be more selective about the programs that we're able to carry on. Another question is the quality neighborhoods that CDBG and home funded. How does it interact with what CB, what quality neighborhoods programs that we're doing? Do they, do they interact, do they? Yeah, and that's, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked, because it's always a confusion, looking back on it, I think we probably should have named things differently. We call quality neighborhoods. We have like six different things under the quality neighborhoods umbrella, and some of them are federally funded, some of them are not. The idea is the quality neighborhoods initiative was to help improve and make our neighborhoods more healthy. Specifically when it deals with housing. The confusion, I think, comes line when we have the quality neighborhoods initiative, we do receive money that is not federally funded, right? And so we get a, we have had money for that, and so that would be separate than the CDBG quality neighborhoods and home quality neighborhoods are not those funds that we receive separately, even though they do sometimes very similar things.
Okay, CDBG can be used for public services, so if the city were to decide to fund a public service. All public services, public services expenditures in one year cannot exceed 15% of the CDBG entitlement and program income for that year, so there is a cap on how much can go to public services. Eligible activities must be a new service or or a quantifiable increase in the level of service, so if a project, if, if a program is already being funded, we cannot replace it with CDBG, it has to be a new program. And this is a list from the HUD manual of the different eligible activities for public service.
Kathy, are there any items on that list that we might consider would be useful to the city that aren't currently being offered through other programs or?
Most of these are being offered through other agencies.
That's one of the things that we will assess as we go through this process. So one of the things we look at is what needs are already being serviced. Are there things that are eligible services that, that the priority need survey that we're conducting is showing that there is a need in the city for and isn't currently being done, so that's part of all our data analysis over the next few months, okay, thank you.
Hey, this is an overview of the five-year consolidated plan. It is the mechanism for receiving HUD entitlement funds, it's the application for entitlement status. And when the con plan is approved, then the city is entitled to the CDBG grant and the home grant. If an activity is not in the con plan, then HUD funds can't have funded, okay, I already said that part. Okay, this is an outline of the different sections that are in the five-year consolidated plan. The process, which requires narratives explaining the citizen participation and consultation with stakeholders. The needs assessment that includes the data analysis on housing needs, public housing and homelessness. A housing market analysis and a strategic plan, which is driven by the city's priority needs. And then the annual action plan, which will implement the first year of the five-year plan. So those are the main sections of the five-year consolidated plan. And then the annual action plan is the application for CDBG entitlement funds for that year. It details a budget. It defines the goals for the year and it outlines the programs that will be funded. And if it's not in the annual action plan, then HUD funds cannot fund it. So for the con plan, planning process. The process begins with community outreach, we start with our citizen participation plan and a priority needs survey. Consultation with stakeholders, public participation, we have booths at events, presentations to organizations. And then a public comment period, which there is a notice published in the paper. And we post our drafts online. And then we work on the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, a market and data analysis. Consideration of public comments, then the drafting of the needs assessment and identification of the priority needs. Then we draft the con plan and then we have a city council work session and a public hearing to adopt the five-year plan. Any questions on the process? And right now we're at the citizen participation plan priority needs survey. We're continually doing community outreach during the whole process, so that will be ongoing. Any questions on that?
So I have a quick question, so we talked about priority needs are different than priority objectives, is that true?
Not really, they're pretty much the same.
Priority objectives, which we saw.
So the, the needs maybe are more general, but then the objective is defining what that, how to address that need.
And what's the timeframe on the, on this, you know, what's the, how many months are we talking about with this whole process?
Yeah, we do have a schedule, we will be back in December and in April for work sessions, I believe.
Okay.
And the, the five-year consolidated plan has a priority needs survey, which is ongoing right now. For HUD-funded projects and programs are determined with the help of public input. The priority needs survey helps us determine what are the community needs, so please take our priority needs survey. You can also go to OgdenCityHomes.com.
Yeah, if you haven't taken that already, if you want the easiest, you can do the QR code or the website is OgdenCityHomes.com. And there's a link you can click on, it'll take you right to the survey.
It looks like it's just a form that you're sending out, so it's not being distributed by a particular survey company or consultant or anything.
We're doing it with Microsoft.
Yeah, it's a, it is a, it's an online forum, it's just embedded through our, through our system here, so.
Hey, in the citizen participation plan, this is the community and economic development department's citizen participation plan for HUD-funded programs. So the purpose is to encourage citizen participation. A citizen participation plan is required to receive HUD entitlement funds. And the plan proposes to include the following items, posting our drafts and approved HUD plans at the city's website. Publishing notices announcing our 30-day public comment period for our five-year plan, our annual action plans, amendments to those plans. And then a 15-day public comment period for our performance report, which is HUD recommendation. Then our HUD plans require two, a minimum of two public hearings during the year. We publish a notice of the public hearing. Hearings and meetings and plans are to be accessible and shall provide reasonable accommodations for persons with disabilities. And then the citizen advisory committee reviews the HUD plans and offers recommendations to the mayor and city council. We have outreach to the public and community groups, consultation with stakeholders, technical assistance available for people needing help. Complaints received from the public to be answered in 15 days or less, and the city must follow its participation plan for HUD programs. So these are the elements of the proposed five citizen participation plan, any questions?
So I just pulled up the form, it looks like it is available on, in English and Spanish, which is great. And the meetings, will they also have a Spanish option or Spanish speaking option?
At our public outreach meetings? Not all of them, but there are some that we do have, I want to thank Julio for being one of our translators from the BIC, but.
All right, thank you.
Any questions on the citizen participation plan?
I have a question, um. When, when you have done outreach in the past to groups, what kind of feedback has been updated or changed in the plan that you have based on that feedback? Like if somebody says, oh, this might be an issue, then what types of things have you changed after that feedback?
Most of the, most of the feedback is really positive, I mean, people like down payment assistance, so we get a lot of positive feedback. A lot of, and then a lot of comments are not specific to the HUD plans, so they like, they would be sent to the department that they're referred to, but in terms of, I can't think of anything right now off the top of my hand that.
Challenge, I think we find mostly, we have that short menu of options that are really available and objectives that can be met with the HUD setup. And when we're asking for feedback, we try and set up a survey which will help kind of gear people towards things that will actually be eligible. You know, a lot of times people are like, this is not my concern, my concern has something to do with this, and so we'll get that feedback, but like Kathy said, that's not something that we can always change and make our, within the HUD rules. And so we try and, you know, like to give that to a department or division that actually has some influence over those type of things.
There is one comment we did receive and that was to increase our down payment assistance amount, and that did happen, so we did, were able to make that work. We can't always, but and the next plan that's required for the five-year plan is the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, so the citizen participation plan and the AI are recommended that we do those first and then we dive into the five-year plan. So that they can, if something needs to be directed in the five-year plan, we have these in place. So we have a fair housing survey results and data to help in understanding the fair housing issues. So the data we'll be considering is the results from the fair housing survey. We have racially concentrated areas of poverty data to help identify areas in distress. We have Utah anti-discrimination and labor division data to review the types of fair housing complaints filed in Ogden. The home mortgage lending data to identify potential patterns of discrimination in mortgage lending. And the home appraisal data to identify potential patterns of discrimination in home valuations. So the fair housing survey, all demographic categories except Native American Indian and Alaska Native were represented in the survey. Respondents selected race, religion and disability as the most common basis for discrimination in Ogden. 19 respondents reported housing discrimination. 16 of the 19 did not report the discrimination and three out of the 19 did report the housing discrimination to HUD. Most identified fair housing issues pertain to either renting an apartment or to finding a home to purchase. The top fair housing concerns, afraid of being evicted, 19 selected. Housing not near my job or public transportation, 15. Asked what ward or church do you attend and then changes to the rental terms or denied reasonable accommodations, 14 selected. Landlord refuses to allow emotional support animals, 11. Landlord refuses a reasonable accommodation, 10. Apartment manager met me in person and then denied or changed rental terms, 9, 9 selected. So the top housing needs. Advocates who can speak on behalf of renters to landlords, 13. An easy process to file fair housing complaints, 12. Making fair housing information more available and easy to find, 12. Educate landlords so they know renters' rights and to provide fair housing opportunities to everyone, 10. Fair housing testing in Ogden. An advocate to walk me through the fair housing complaint process, 8, 6. And fair housing information in my native language, 6. And then one asked to pick the three most critical priority needs for fair housing in Ogden. A variety of housing options to increase housing diversity, 24 selected. Preserve the city's housing stock to promote naturally occurring affordable housing, 23. Build small homes, 16. Public transportation near my home and job, 15. Advocates who speak on behalf of renters to landlords for fair housing rights, 13. Help people with home repairs, 12. Make fair housing information more available, 12, and an easy process to file fair housing complaints, 12. So when asked, in the case of housing discrimination, why was the housing discrimination not reported? I didn't know how to report it, 8 selected. Other reasons for selected, I don't believe it would help, 3, afraid of retaliation, 2, and it was too time-consuming, 2. So in summary, the top concern is affordable housing. Not reporting fair housing complaints is a concerning fair housing issue with 19 reported discrimination complaints and only three were filed with HUD. Discrimination based on race, religion and disability are top identified fair housing concerns and disability is the most commonly reported type of discrimination. Fear of eviction was the top fair housing concern. Public transportation near my home and job ring tie by respondents and the top reported fair housing needs are fair housing advocates making fair housing complaint process easier. Access to fair housing information and educating landlords on fair housing rights. That was the fair housing survey results. So racially concentrated areas of poverty are census tracts with 50% or more minority population and high poverty rate. A poverty rate of at least 40% or three times higher than the county poverty rate. The goal of the racially concentrated areas of poverty data is to analyze levels and patterns of segregation and poverty. So this is a look over the last 10 years of racially concentrated areas and poverty in Ogden. So in 2010, we had five racially concentrated areas of poverty, five census tracts. In 2014, we had four, in 2013, we had three, and in 2020, we have two census tracts, 2012 and 2018. So the last 10 years has seen a steady decline in racially concentrated areas of poverty in Ogden. Census tracts 2012 and 2018 have continually met the definition of racially concentrated areas of poverty through the last 10 years and more. So Ogden's neighborhood revitalization strategy area and its commitment to HUD funding focuses on improving the conditions in these neighborhoods through improved housing and job creation for everyone. The data suggests that current con-plan and NRSE strategies are working and to can, may continue to benefit the, these areas. So fair housing complaints that have been filed by, um, to the Utah Division of Anti-Discrimination and Labor Division, this data on fair housing complaints of people that filed in Ogden. So the basis of complaints have been color, one disability, a mental disability for complaints, disability based on, um, mental, physical disability, two. Race, black, one, familial status, two, and retaliation, two. So in the two-year period, 12 complaints were filed with, um, to the Utah Anti-Discrimination Labor Division on behalf of HUD. Okay, in the two-year period, 12 fair housing complaints were filed. Disability is the most common fair housing complaint filed with one half of the complaints on the basis of disability. The disability law center used to provide us data. They have new staff and no fair housing complaint data has been available in the last couple of years. And, um, they are also, they've also stopped testing in Ogden, so the disability law center used to do fair housing testing in Ogden and has stopped since their staff has changed. So the, um, Home Mortgage Disclosure Act, um, requires lending institutions to report data regarding the disposition of applications for mortgages and home improvement loans. And requires lenders to identify sex and race of applicants. The purpose of the data is to determine whether financial institutions are serving the housing needs of their communities and in identifying possible discrimination lending patterns. So this is a look at 2017 data, a comparison of Ogden's success rate by race compared to the Ogden Clearfield MSA area. So if we compare the two, we can see that Ogden had a much higher success rate than the MSA, the Ogden Clearfield area. Um, in every category except race not available. Sometimes the data just, um, they just don't report, so we have to use the data that we have. So this is a look at the Ogden City 2023 mortgage application disposition by race. We can see the success rate for Ogden applicants by race, and we noticed that Native Hawaiians and, um, other Pacific Islanders had the lowest success rate for a mortgage. Um, or home loan with only 33% sex or success rate. Okay, and a comparison of Ogden's success rate from 2017 to 2023. We can see a decline in every category, every category except race not available. So every category had a decline in, um, the success of mortgages by race. So the Ogden, um, 2017 data on mortgage success rate, we can see that Ogden is, had a higher success rate than the Ogden Clearfield MSA in all minority categories. For the 2023 data, Ogden data Hawaiian, Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders had the lowest success rate and the only race below 50% success rate. Only 12 Native Hawaiians or Pacific Islanders applied for a mortgage, which is less than 1% of all loans in the applicant, applications in the year. And over 500 applicants did not report their race or ethnicity. Um, this is something we cannot control, but, um, hopefully the data will improve. And as a comparison between 2017 and 2023, every race and category declined in success rate except race not available. Two or more race or not applicable had the highest decline with a success rate, um, going down 34%. Looks like it was a hard year for a lot of people. So housing appraisal data, in 2021, the US Department of Federal Housing and Finance Agency created a national property appraisal database to help identify and eliminate ethnic and racial bias in home valuations. The data is used to monitor industry trends and compare appraisal gaps between minority and white neighborhoods. An appraisal gap is the difference between the agreed-upon sale price and the appraised value of the home. When an appraisal is below contract price, it can delay the closing, it can decrease equity in the home value and can lead to a failed transaction. So this is a chart, um, that shows, um, the two phases. So the data, first data ran on June of 2021, and then the second phase is when the data was run, uh, almost a year later, at March of 2022. And you can see there is a decline in the appraisal gap. And this is the nationwide data, so this is for the whole nation. Okay, and then this chart, we're looking at by each state, the appraisal gap in phase one, which was, um, in June of 2021, and then in, I gotta go back, June of 2021 and then March of 2022. And Utah is on the far right, the second, the second two bars on the far right. And, um, the, in conclusion, this is the Uniform Appraisal Database. The data shows a reduced appraisal gap between June 2021 and March 2022. It represents an encouraging trend as public and private stakeholders continue their efforts to eliminate appraisal bias. So an appraisal bias has become a national concern. And then in phase one, Utah had a 5% appraisal gap. In phase two, Utah had one of the greatest decreases in appraisal gaps by falling to less than one-half of percent.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that because I don't understand the previous graph in relation to this, do you mind? And it's really tiny, but I can look on my screen too, but. So what is it saying, and then comparing in Utah? The blue is the first phase, and then the yellow is the second, and that's just the gap?
Right.
And the colors, okay, I just wanted to understand that, thanks.
So what they're looking at is sense, minority census tracts and the appraisal gap compared to white census tracts and the appraisal gap. So more studies are underway to determine if the decrease across the board is causal or was it due to the creation of the database and the task force? Um, and the city will just continue to monitor that data. It was encouraging to see such a huge drop for Utah. So fair housing data conclusion, race, religion and disability are the top categories for her, fair housing discrimination reported in the fair housing survey. Not reporting for housing discrimination is common. Improving the fair housing infrastructure structure is rated high by the fair housing survey respondents. And affordable housing is a high priority ranking higher than fair housing concerns. Disability is the most common reported fair housing discrimination. Racially concentrated areas of poverty are on the decline with census tracts 2012 and 2018 continuing to be racially concentrated areas of poverty. Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders have the fewest mortgage applications and the lowest mortgage success rate. Over 9% of mortgage applicants did not report race and ethnicity. In the six-year period between 2017 and 2023, all racial groups had a decline in the percent of successful mortgage applications. So this is a look at what our current analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So HUD requires us to identify what the impediments to fair housing choice are in our community and then to create action items to address those as part of our five-year con-plan process. So the first was uneven fair housing infrastructure, deteriorating quality of housing in racially concentrated areas of poverty. Weak job transit connections, landlords lack familiarity with Fair Housing Act. And the high rate of foreclosures and evictions in the NRSE, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area. So in the new AI that we're developing right now for this five-year plan, some of the proposed impediments to address in the AI are high rate of evictions, ineffective fair housing infrastructure, lack of affordable housing, limited public transportation items, and landlords lack familiarity in Fair Housing Act. Okay, any questions on the AI or the fair housing survey, the data or the proposed impediments?
I have a quick question, and it's around, why do they not, or maybe it's, why does FIEC not specifically include Hispanic, Latino in there?
They do, they do, yes. It was just not on this presentation, sorry.
Okay, because I thought maybe that, that was an increase.
Yeah.
Race not available, I just wondered if that's what they, because there's no.
Yeah, I think it was, um, included in just the Ogden, right here, in the Ogden one. Um, we didn't have the data for the 2017 Hispanic data. We had it for Ogden alone, but not for the MSA, so it was left out. So.
So that's, it is a, it's still a box that.
It's still there, yeah. Any other questions on the analysis of impediments for housing choice?
Okay, I'm sorry, I just thought of this because I have to do it in my job, but do you do any analysis of like the languages in the community to see what might be? And we, I mean, we know Spanish is, but I just wonder, you know, is that part of your analysis too, to understand the community better? If there's other languages that are becoming more.
Yes, the city does have what's called a language, can't think of it, then language, uh, assistance plan, it might be called, I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
No, that's good.
So we do have a plan, which is required by FHEO for the city, so we, we have done that analysis. And then the city, um, set up a, um, a translation program, so, um, people who translate can get an extra pay, um,
Right.
for their services as translator. So there's an actual list of who is certified to translate in languages, so that as someone calls, then as an employee, we know who to send them to. So we do have that language assistance plan, um, in place, which, um, is kind of a HUD requirement.
Thanks, I was just curious.
Good question, any other?
Another language might become our problem, you never know.
Hey, our next steps, we'll continue to gather and analyze data, community outreach, consultation with stakeholders. We'll create a needs assessment, develop strategies and action items, and then draft documents. It's basic, the very basic of how the process goes. Any questions on the five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan, the priority needs survey, or the AI? That was a lot, thank you for staying with me.
All right.
We'll be back.
Sounds great, thank you. Okay, up next, um, we're gonna jump down to the RDA, uh, proposed Adams Community Reinvestment Area. So Sarah, you can join us on this one.
Good afternoon, um, we are looking forward to having some further discussion on this topic. And, um, Lori Buckley is joining me today as well, um, as our city arts administrator. She has a lot of expertise in some of the topics that we talked about last time, and we'll be sharing her perspective on those things as well. Um, so for our presentation today, we tried to just kind of go question by question from the questions that we heard in our last discussion and provide our responses to those questions, but please feel free to jump in at any time as we kind of talk through some of these topics. Um, so one of the questions we had, um, from the last meeting and some of the follow-up is whether the use of tax increment is allowed for arts and events programming. And this is something that we've reviewed on the administrative side with legal and finance, and we, we do feel pretty comfortable with this. Looking at the state code for redevelopment agencies, um, there is a category that allows a broad use of RDA funds for purposes authorized under this, this title. And because our project area plan talks about the creation of, of a cultural district is one of the key projects. That effort is really part of the, the redevelopment purpose that we have for that particular project area. Um, we also did some research into, uh, precedent that we had found with the Salt Lake City Redevelopment Agency. Um, and we have found that they are also using RDA funds from the Block 70 project area um, to support events programming in the Regent Street area, which is behind the, uh, New Capitol Theater. No, feel free to hop in.
So I did see that, but you reached out to them. Was that something that was programmed in prior though? Did they know that that was going to be part of the whole, um, RDA funding?
That's a good question, so when they did the Regent Street improvements, were they planning at that time for the event programming? That's a good question that we can follow up on, I'm not sure on that. I'll say for us, it's been, um, definitely a lesson learned as we've done some of our work in the Nine Rails Creative District. I think initially we were very focused on building some of these physical spaces and assets and kind of thought, you know, if you build it, they'll come. Um, we have a lot of great arts organizations in the community, um, and thought that the programming would happen somewhat organically if we built the right spaces for that. But it, it needs a lot of support, um, is what we found. And we want to make sure that we are activating the spaces that we've invested in appropriately, and that takes some additional, um, investment and attention. Um, the next question we heard at the last meeting is just, you know, is, is this an appropriate use of tax increment? It is pretty different from how we've used tax increment in the past. And we definitely don't want to take away from that, we don't want to dilute the fact that TIP is used primarily to support um, the types of development that we want to see in our project areas, that TIP is used, um, to fund public improvements. That needs to stay the primary goal of TIP funds in our project areas. Um, but at the same time, we found that the, the programming is really necessary to make sure that those improvements we're investing in achieve their maximum impact and value. So I think the Donkey Arts Plaza is a good example. If we just built the plaza and didn't have our programming partnership with Weber State, um, it wouldn't serve the same community benefit. Um, and it wouldn't contribute as much to generating value in, in the project area up there. Um, we talked about this a little bit last time, but really just wanted to emphasize here, um, that we have seen really significant growth in the assessed values in the Adams CRA. Um, and believe that the arts and culture activities happening in Nine Rails play a major role in this. Um, so from 2017 to 2023, the assessed values in the Adams CRA increased by more than $100 million. Um, that's an annual growth rate of about 29%, um, which far out pieces what we've seen in other CRAs that were created around the same time, such as the Continental CRA. Um, and then, yeah.
You said that you didn't, we haven't seen the, what, I think, or maybe I just misunderstood. So you said that you didn't think that we had seen the growth, but we really have seen the growth.
So when you look at the Adams CRA compared with other CRAs that were established around the same time, they have not been growing as fast as what we've seen in the Adams CRA, and we attribute a lot of that to the, the arts and culture development that's happened up there.
But so it seems like it's went well by doing.
Yeah, yeah, we need to maintain that momentum. I think, you know, we have, um, the beginnings of a very successful creative district, but, um, if we don't make sure that we sustain that momentum that we've built to this point, then we run some risks of that either not continuing to grow, kind of stagnating or plateauing, or even going backwards. Um, and then like I mentioned, you know, this is, this is going to be a relatively small portion of any project area budget. So we want to keep that focus on encouraging, um, quality development, investing in public improvements. So with what we've proposed here for the Adams CRA, we'd be a little bit under 1% for this pilot project of the total Adams CRA project area budget. And if it was of interest to the RDA board, um, as we look at whether this is something that we want to explore for other CRAs moving forward, um, we could talk about whether it might even make sense to set a percentage cap on how much of any project area budget could be used to support arts and events programming. Um, and then I think just before we move on to the, kind of the next section of this, um, we were asked about considering alternative funding sources for this type of arts programming. And at this time, that's not something that we would recommend. We think it makes sense to look at the RDA funds because it fairly narrowly focuses the use of those funds. We would only do this when we have an RDA project area that has a specific goal that could be supported by this type of programming. And, you know, we have talked about things in the past, like special assessment areas or business improvement districts that could help fund programming um, along with operations and maintenance, but those tools come with their own set of challenges. And so at this time, um, we're definitely focused on RDA funds for project areas that have that specific need as, as the best source of funds for this type of work. Um, so I'm going to turn it over now to Lori to talk a little bit more about the ROI that we see from arts, uh, arts programming here in our community and elsewhere.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, as you saw, Sarah talked a lot about our increase in that area of our, um, property values going up $100 million. Um, we do see that across, across the country, um, in a lot of my research for public art. The American Planning, uh, Institute shows that public art can increase a property value from 20 to 35%. The American Planning Institute shows that public art can increase a property value from 20 to 35%. So this arts and culture return on investment is actually, it's hard to quantify, but they know that the numbers are strongly there. We've seen a huge leverage of the city's money by partnering and collaborating with Ogden Contemporary Arts. They secured $5.3 million to help us develop the Dunky Arts Plaza, which is a huge piece of the epicenter of the creative district. If we don't have a programmable space or area, then your district really isn't going to function correctly. We need a gathering space. We need a programmable space to do public programming, to have something for the community day, community and visitors to interact with. So they contributed to the Dunky Arts Plaza. They developed and helped us develop the programming for the endowment money that went to Weber State University. They installed that Monarch and Modem mural, which is nationally known. You see it all over on social media. They have an ongoing project called the Walls Mural Project. The newest mural in there is the Eric Garcia mural. That was that first slide that you saw in Sarah's presentation. And that's a continuing program that will be spread throughout the creative district. They've also acquired $1 million of secured funds for free public exhibitions. And this is a really important piece of a creative district. The reason why we are looking at OKUS strongly for this partnership or this contract is that we we need a contemporary arts gallery that's functioning free to the public in Ogden. We have one that exists up on Weber State University campus. It's the Shaw Gallery. That's the only other contemporary arts gallery in Ogden. It's not really publicly accessible. No one goes up there because you can't figure out how to park. It's only, it's only programmed from, I'd say, September. Yeah, the BRT does. That's actually a good point. But the programming only runs through September through April, I believe. So it is kind of in, you know, it's a little bit intimidating gallery to visit. So we're looking, we need this gallery who already has and has brought in regional, national, international contemporary art exhibits right here to Ogden. We have really amazing galleries here in Ogden already that are functioning on a local artist level. So they're doing their high school shows in our local palette clubs and the water color clubs and pottery clubs are showing at our other galleries, but we don't have that piece that OCA is bringing to Ogden, which is that international and national artists that are going to come. And part of this is the way they structure this. And this, this process takes about 18 to 24 months of a pipeline of work to bring one of these exhibitions to Ogden. So they are required to do public engagement within our community. And OCA has an artist factory program that these visiting artists or artists in residence and these artists that come in for these exhibitions work with our disturbed youth. They work with Youth Impact, the YCC, I think the Boys and Girls Club and many other organizations. They do school, school tours. So they're, they're providing this amazing return on investment for our community in arts and culture. So that's something to think about when we're talking about our, an ROI. Also visitation. They show 113,000 annual visits to OCA and the Monarch and the Dunky Arts Plaza that combined has an average dwell time of 115 minutes. And that's pretty unheard of when you're talking about just bringing people to visit. That's longer than you would normally spend in a restaurant. So when we look at that as a return on investment according to tourism or visitation, which then brings in sales tax dollars. These, these high visitation numbers, which will probably increase if we allow this pilot project project to go forward with more programming and more things that's available for visitors to come to Ogden is going to increase our sales tax revenue in arts and culture. So they do bring visitors in from from out of state. Let's stay on this slide for just a second. So this isn't provided in your packet, and I just was looking at things today and we can provide this after. But this is a report from the State of Art Report from Nine Arts, which is a nationwide consulting firm that works with private sector businesses, counties and cities on creative placemaking. And they have an ROI section that shows that the hard ROI on arts and culture is a 51 in 51% increase in an area of foot traffic and time spent in that area. And we can see that with our 115 minutes. That's almost two hours that people are spending when they visit the creative district. We can see that it encourages repeat visits. People talk about there and they tell their friends to come. And so they come back with their friends. They're bringing people back to Ogden. And then we also can see that there's a 65% increase or generation of positive public social media and PR for these locations. So that this is shining a really good light on Ogden. And what that's good for us because we want more people to move here. We want businesses to move here. And we want people to visit here. And so outside of recreation, you know, and not everybody recreates. What are you going to do? What do you do when you go on vacation? Like what, what, what experiences are you looking for? Because that experiential economy is something that we as a city need to start looking at. We've got some numbers from this book. It's the Economic Power of Public Art by Coda Works. In their surveys, they said 72% of consumers are now prioritizing experiences over material possessions, especially our younger, our younger generations. 67% of millennials will say that they will pay for unique experiences. And these unique experiences are usually found in a creative district or creative sector of a city. The Creative School in Toronto has done studies and shown that people are 50% more likely to spend time in spaces with creative placemaking. So as we're talking about supporting this district that we've put a lot of money in as a city, it doesn't really happen by itself. It happens by us. It's like a little baby toddler right now. We need to hold its hand and keep going till it starts organically producing this itself, but it isn't there yet. So we need to just put a little bit more time and effort into this creative district to make it function the way we really want it to. So when we're looking also at return of on investment, like hard, hard numbers, we don't have this yet. We're in the process of creating one of these in partnership with Visit Ogden. And it's an economic in in economic impact study of arts and culture in Ogden through Visit Ogden and Tourism. This is a study that was done by the Ken Gardner Institute in 2022 of Davis County. So Davis County is not producing the amount and of arts programming, cultural programming that we do in Ogden. So our numbers will probably be significantly higher than this. In 2022, Davis County art sector generated $691 million into their economy. And of that money, so some of its salaries and stuff, but of that money, $215 million was local sales tax revenue. So we can see there's a huge return on investment if we invest a little bit of money into supporting arts and culture. So we can go forward. So as far as procurement goes and the justification for a sole source with OCA, like I said before, OCA is already a functioning contemporary arts gallery. They're already regionally and nationally known. They have the exhibitions in their pipeline, which, as I know, and I don't know, you're probably unfamiliar with the process of how long it takes to get an exhibition, an artist to build something or to work on through a pipeline of getting them to actually come to Ogden to install a physical exhibition that you would walk through. It's about a two year process. And so we need to contract with an organization that is already functioning in this way. They have a track record of already partnering with the city. They've contributed large amounts of money towards investing into the creative district already. They provide free programming. Everything they do is free. Their artist factory programming, their gallery shows are always free, the education programs that they provided for our youth. Everything they do is free to the public. So it is already functioning. And because this pilot project is so short, it's 18 months. To ask someone else to actually do this, it would take them that long to actually get ready to even bring an exhibition in. So for this pilot period, we would like to sole source with OCA. And then if the, when, I'm going to say when, when this is very successful, when that contract runs out, we can then go out to RFP to look for other organizations that might be interested in, you know, signing up to produce or to provide programming for the creative district. Do you have any questions about the ROI or the, the reason why we're looking at OCA for this programming?
Well, I really appreciate all the information I read through the report that you sent as well. And the only concern I have, and again, I know I have to kind of set aside my bias because I love OCA and I'm a huge supporter. But, um, so what I was thinking about was, you know, that I had said like an RFP process might be the best approach. So then we have fairness and everything. And I appreciate that you're saying after the pilot program. Oh, yeah, have it right there. Anyway. So my only worry with that is that, I mean, I totally get what you're saying about how they're uniquely qualified to do this project. But I know especially after they do it for 18 months, and if it's going well and you want to keep doing it, they will be only better qualified because they'll have been doing it for 18 months. So I guess that's, to me, it seems like maybe if we just put an RFP out real quick, then you can just make sure they're the only organization locally that would be the best fit. And then, I don't know, that just makes more sense to me, but.
I agree. I agree with your, and I, I'm, I'm a 100. I'm a 100% supporter of providing the opportunity for any artist or organization to participate in any opportunity. But in this instance, I am very familiar with all of the arts organizations in Ogden. I work with them almost every day. They write grants to me. I understand the capacity of the organizations. I understand what they do well. And to be honest with you, we can do an RFP process, but I don't know that anyone else would answer it because they don't, they, what we're looking for in a partner organization to actually produce a programming, OCA is the only one that's actually doing that. Like if you brought up Echols, and I love Echols, they are an amazing, amazing organization, and they are so good at what they do in supporting our local and regional artists with these art shows. They are not a contemporary arts gallery. It's a very different animal, I guess I could say. It's, it's, we're not comparing apples to apples. So the only other organizations that could really even, that would even be in the realm is the Shaw Gallery at Weber State. And they, they don't have the capacity to take this on. They're already our programming partner for the installations that are being provided at Dunky Arts Plaza. And they are struggling with that, like with staffing to be able to provide the program that's required there.
If they had another $100,000, they might be able to do it. Just like the apples might be wanting to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's just, I just have to do that because you understand my.
I understand.
Yeah.
Something else we've talked about a little bit internally too, to address the concern of giving other arts organizations an opportunity to program in Nine Rails and some resources to program in Nine Rails. And also to address the concern about trying to disperse the arts programming a little bit more broadly through the Nine Rails District and not just in that intensive area that we'd identified. We've talked about maybe looking at putting some additional funds into a program like the existing Arts Grants Program that do go out for public solicitation. And it could be money that was specifically dedicated for Nine Rails programming that other arts organizations would have an opportunity to apply for, like through our grants process and maybe consider some other locations throughout the district as well. So that's something we've talked about internally as well.
Yeah, locations for maybe mural projects or, you know, small theater projects, hopefully at Lester Park or, you know, another programmable space.
Yeah, and those, you know, it's just my, I know other people have other things they want to talk about. But I'll just have to say, if we don't do an RFP process for this, I may not be able to support it. But you know, it doesn't mean that I don't support overall the program, but that's just my own personal perspective.
Anyone else? Okay, go for it.
Yours, yours is on.
Mine's always on.
So I, I want to be really, be really clear. I, I, I love Nine Rails Arts Area. I've loved the programming. I understand the ROI. And I would love to really understand that a lot more. I have been the one that says that I, I just think that it's the wrong funding source. And I know that, that, and there's reasons why I just, I'm, I'm a purist behind where that RDA money or where that tax increment needs to come from. And Sarah, I know I owe you a call. You have been very patient. Thank you. And maybe there's more to it that I'm not seeing. I understand that legally we can do it. I just think that if we haven't programmed it prior to this, that we, it's, it's, you know, it's kind of like eating half your bucket of popcorn and then saying, hey, I want butter on it now. I just think we need to figure out maybe a different source of funding. And I, and I read your comments about not being able to, that this might be the best option. So I, I, I think if maybe I can get through that, that's. One of the things that came up as you were talking that I don't, I, and maybe you don't have the answer to this, is that, you know, we had some changes or proposed changes to, well, we did have some changes and proposed changes to our arts grant funding and how we give out that money. Does this fall under that? And you keep talking about programming, but then the next thing you say is, but they're also going to program exhibits. And will that fall under, and that money, then it, will that fall under the same standards? Thank you.
Under the same standards as the Arts Grants guidelines or restrictions? Of course, everything are murals, public murals, or even private murals. The restrictions or guidelines that we give them all fall under that same, you know, those, those restrictions that are, you know, no political advertising, no hate speech, nothing vulgar. It's like, everything has to be publicly, you know, viewable.
Right. So I guess my question is from OCA's standpoint, is it, are we the best source of that money, I guess, is the question? Because I would think that they would want maybe a broader definition of what they can put in there.
I mean, their current exhibit is pretty political on purpose.
Well, yeah. Okay, let me rephrase that. Political in the fact that we can't support people running for office, political, not, not political issues. So political issues are almost always a subject of of public art exhibitions or things. It's, it's current issues and things that people are talking about there, there to make people think about a different way of looking at something. They're very educational and create, you know, good, good conversation about things that people need to consider and and talk about. It's really important for a healthy community to have public art that is sparking that conversation. I'm not talking about that kind of political. I'm talking about, you know, Lori's going to run for mayor and I'm going to, you know, use public dollars to fund my campaign. So.
I just, I, it just came to me that I'm wondering if we should, maybe they should be, maybe they should be looking at a different source of funding for programming or something. And us supporting in a different format. That was just.
And, and they're always looking for funding on their own. They're very good at writing for grants. It is something that all of our nonprofit organizations, in a perfect world, there would be plenty of money for all of these arts organizations to get funded. But in the reasoning why we're here is the district isn't doing what we expect it to do at the moment. It's not functioning the way our plan, our, you know, our, just our Nine Rails Creative Master Plan. It needs a little boost. It needs some help. And that is why we are being involved and as a funding source to help push the district to the next level. And then at some point, you know, we're assuming that organizations will start programming, they'll move in. It'll start kind of happening by itself, but it is still in its baby steps and taller. And we need to hold its hand a little bit longer to get, you know, to have it function the way we want and to provide this amazing experiential, educational, you know, resource for our community to, you know, be impacted by.
Yeah, and I get that. And I. Yeah, and I get that. And I, it worries me when people say at some point because that means for another twenty years, but that, that's not my issue. My issue has to do with this, the funding source. And it's, it's, it's actually the start, and it's not in the arts. It's a start of what we're gonna do in, in other areas, you know, Union Station, whatever we do next. And so I guess, I'm just really, I'm, I'm just trying to, I, I, I wish I knew more about the, how, how I could even communicate this better. I just, I just don't know that this is the best way to do it without funding or without programming it first when we started.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's on our minds a lot with the Union Station right now, because any of you that have seen the preferred concept that was presented back in February, it's a beautiful concept. It has tons of public space that would be in front of the historic Union Station. And that's great. And there's a lot of, um, passive spaces that can be really well enjoyed by the community. But there's so much of it. And we want to have that for our community, but that has to be intentionally programmed to create the activity and the vibrancy that we're looking for in these districts. Um, and so as we think about investing in public spaces like the Dunky Arts Plaza or like the new civic space that's gonna come at Union Station, we have to be mindful of who are the people that are gonna program? Who are the organizations that are gonna program? What funding sources do they need? And, um, we would love to have the opportunity to pilot that with this project and, and see what we can learn from this and take that into our new, um, project areas moving forward. Because we definitely see it as a pretty pressing need.
A perfect example of, of, of like the city investing in something and then not following up with programming would be if you, you know, build this big baseball park and we didn't have our recreation department doing recreation activities, what's gonna happen there? You know, if we leave it up and just build it and then walk away, you know, that's kind of a waste of money. Maybe someone uses it, maybe they don't, maybe it becomes, you know, an encampment. Who knows what happens? But because we are actively programming these areas with recreation pr- programming, it's successful. You know, these are successful areas. And so we've built and built this creative district and build a plaza and all these things. And we just need to pro, we need to program these new areas and these new developments like the Union Plaza areas, um, so that they are successful. And so that is adding to the Ogden's cultural, you know, um, landscape, like our fabric, our cultural fabric of Ogden is really what we do outside of work. And though, these are the areas that are important, you know, and these are, these, this is what is bringing new business to Ogden, you know, when business, big businesses looking at Ogden, they ask, what is there for our employees to do outside of work? You know, we need, we need this to build on our business base. We want, you know, a good, we need good, you know, residents to move here. And it's what you do outside of work is really the key thing that. And so, and that really falls into arts and culture.
So just as we have money that goes to affordable housing or a percentage that goes to that, maybe we should
That would be lovely.
That's what I mean. I don't know that we've thought through the whole.
Yeah.
And I, I'm just very concerned that we're using.
Were there any other questions from other council members?
I, I appreciate the discussion and, and your answers there. Very helpful for sure. Do we have a projection on how, you know, we, we look at the hundred million dollar increase in the value over the last six years? And I would maybe, which is good, I wonder if the twenty-nine percent's accurate, if we maybe double check that number, but do we have a projection on where we're going if, with this funding, how that could, how we could maybe see, or what? How could we anticipate property value growth with the programming?
I don't know that we have, um, numbers on that in particular. We have, um, the project area budget for the Adams CRA, which um, was set up at that, at the onset of that project area plan and looked at the anticipated increase in valuation across the whole CRA. Um, but it wasn't specific to arts and culture. It was kind of looking at the, the, the sum total of everything. The development projects, the creation of the cultural district and, um, all the things that go into that.
Okay. Would, would it be reasonable to assume that it, that whatever that percentage is would continue with this program or would have been enhance it or not, not really, or?
I'm, I'm thinking definitely enhance it. Um, if you look at other creative districts across the country, there's a huge increase in, um, sales tax and, uh, property values, actually so much so that it becomes almost counterproductive for the artists. They, they tend to be priced out
Yeah.
of these areas because they are so successful. Um, but it is, it is something that these other cities have invested money in. They have programmed the areas. It is, you know, it, it just doesn't happen by magic, you know? Wish I had a magic wand to fix all these things, but.
And I think the development interest that we've seen is really closely linked to the creative district as well. So we talked a little bit a, a week or two ago about the pipeline of projects we have that are interested in being in the Adams CRA. And a lot of that current development interest is because they've seen the momentum that's building in the nine rails creative district, and they want to um, be a part of that and invest in that. Um, so some of them have shared that with us pretty directly, is that that's a decision factor for them.
Hey. No other questions? Think this comes to us on, do we have another discussion on it or is it coming? Sorry, I was gonna check that.
Well, if you. If you want to move forward, um, it, we could do it next week or push it October first.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, uh, talk about that in our leadership and see which makes the most sense. And if there are additional questions, we'll get them to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, just a thought, um, if you approve the budget amendment, that couldn't happen till October first, so. Might want to.
Might make sense just to do it on October first. Okay. All right. Up next, we have Justin. I was looking around earlier. He's right behind me. Welcome, Justin, to talk about the proposed budget amendment.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members, um, to be able to come before you tonight and um, go over the appropriation that would be recommended if you were to move forward with, um, the funding of this, uh, program. Um, it's a pretty simple, um, budget opening that would be requested. It would be to appropriate a use of fund balance in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and then that would go towards the area-specific program funding for the arts. And so that is the proposal on the budget side that would go along with the, the request from administration. And so as, as Janine mentioned, if I can go to the next slide, the request would be to hold the public hearing, um, and have the board consider this resolution on, on October first to increase the budget in the RDA. Any questions for me on the budget impact?
Questions? That was an easy one.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jared Johnson, welcome, uh, to talk about the Wonder Block land transfer development agreement. Maybe we should have kept Justin up here to talk about the Wonder Block interest, but that's okay. Well, we'll go this way. Don't want to mess up.
Well, thank you. Um, hopefully this one will be rather simple as well as we kind of go through. Anyway, we just want to talk about a couple of the modifications and the changes that we are recommending to the LTDA for Wonder Block. We'll kind of jump in and go through those. Um, this first slide right here is just kind of a site plan that shows the overall layout, just to gain some familiarity with it. We'll go into more detail, um, on some of these as we go. And again, as you're away, as you're aware, excuse me, the phase one is parking garage, which is hard to miss right now. It's under construction. Um, growing larger every day, which is exciting. Um, that's the kind of the darker blue right there that you see, will eventually kind of be in the, uh, middle portion of the block. So the items that we're gonna kind of go through, we're gonna talk about in the adjustments to the LTDA, we're gonna talk about some phasing, um, and some naming. And all of this stuff is done just to provide clarity and, um, cleanup of a few things as we go through. Also talk about the commencement and the completion dates, um, updated recitals and some definitions. And then, um, the agency and the MBA funding. So the updates to the phasing and the naming, um, right now in phase one, it talks about the east parking garage, which is phase one. And that will remain that way. Phase two references, um, also remain unchanged in the terms of the grocery, the commercial and the residential. But I'll show you in some slides coming up why we're trying to make some modifications there because the parking structure number two, which is the west parking structure, um, is underneath those. And so as the condominium plat and some other things that were done, uh, we'll go through and we'll identify why the west parking structure will remain defined as a parking structure um, in unit two within phase two, but the lot designation gets modified from lot two to lot one. Because really phase one is already owned by the RDA and the city and was not technically a lot in the, in the condominium. Phase three, um, is the hotel that, that fronts up on, um, Twenty-Fifth Street. And it gets more clearly identified in here. Um, it remains the same, referring to that real property improvement again, fronting Twenty-Fifth Street for the hotel. But the lot designation has been changed from being lot three to lot two, again, removing phase one parking structure as lot one. So that's why that's new, a new lot one, lot two. You kind of see in here, there's that phase one, that parking structure. The overall site plan. The west parking garage remains defined as the parking structure, but again, it becomes a lot. Um, changed from lot two to lot one because we removed the lot from the phase one parking structure. I know I'm repeating some of this stuff. It gets a little, it, I have to repeat it to myself to make sure that I stay on track with this sometimes. Um, but you can see that parking structure right there in that green is underneath the office. Um, and some of those other, and so as we went through, we're doing this to clean up and defining um, the actual ownership and then the funding, because it was getting a little bit blurred in some of the funding that was going through about what was, um, part of it and what was not, what was, what we could contribute to and what was not. This actually goes through and, and cleans it up in the LTDA. The commencement dates, um, and the completion dates, these were the originals. You had phase one, um, November of twenty-three and ending in twenty-five, phase two in May of twenty-four and going through twenty-eight. The west parking garage was not identified originally in any of those, and so we've corrected that to include it. It's also interesting to know as we go through and up on these updated dates, the reason that we're requesting a date to these is partly because the developer could not get started on time to meet some of those original dates, waiting for the city to complete some of the steps and processes that we had to go through. And so we're updating those to show that, you know, they could start once we were also in line to get going. So those, the updated dates now show the commencement of, um, a phase one in March of twenty-four and completing in the end of September twenty-five. And again, that is the parking structure, uh, the large parking structure. Phase two commencing construction at the end of July of twenty-five and completing by the end of twenty-eight. The west parking garage that is part of phase two, but is the portion of ownership that, um, that we have, the MBA has, that has started, um, so that commencement in June of twenty-four and will be, also be completing in September of twenty-five. Um, and then phase three has been identified in there again, which is the hotel, the commencement construction by the end of June um, of twenty-six and completing in December of twenty-seven. The agency and the MBA funding, this is just goes through and makes a clarification. There's really not a lot of changes or additions in here from what was on the original documents. But it goes through and it identifies that the agency and the MBA are committed, um, to issuing those bonds, which you're aware of. Um, so the MBA fifty-two million dollars for the parking structures. Um, and then the RDA, the sixty-four million and the joint venture of the actual Wonder Block project itself. This goes through, it just talks about those in there, and it also clarifies that there is no additional funding that will be, be provided beyond the stated amounts. Basically, we had this in there before. But we have agreed to those amounts. Those are the amounts that we will, um, contribute to the project. We will not be going out and seeking or securing more funding options to cover anymore. Um, there is no more due on these projects. Now, it's, it's interesting to read in there also. Um, we do clarify, even though we're saying we're not providing any more funding, if for some reason there was an overage on the parking structures, we're still entitled to pay what the actual costs are. But we're not going to be making any additions to them and then going and seeking out additional loan or grant or bond opportunities. Uh, some miscellaneous adjustments that kind of go through there. It just clarifies on the agency representative, um, clarifying the appointment and potential replacements of the agency representative um, by the Community Economic Development, um, Department Director is designee. Uh, we identified the closing agent. We changed that from, um, Cottonwood Title to Lincoln Title Insurance Agency. Um, the conveyance instruments, they change, um, from a special warranty to a quitclaim deed as requested by the agency. And then also emphasizes that the terms and provisions of this amendment will control in the case of any conflicts or inconsistencies with the original agreement. Um, the agreement as amended will remain in full force and effect. As we jump down into recital U, uh, we also did some clarification on the parking garage ownership. The original document stated that the real property underlying both the east parking garage and the west parking garage will be owned in fee simple by the agency, which is correct. We've amended that though to identify, um, that specifically that the agency will enter into a separate, the agency is the RDA, the redevelopment agency will enter into a separate ground lease with the MBA, the municipal building authority. The municipal, the municipal building authority was who obtained the bonds for the parking structures. Um, and so the agency will enter into a separate ground lease with the MBA authorizing the construction and ownership of, um, by the MBA of both the east and west parking structures. Um, the MBA will then enter into the leases, into leases with Ogden City to maintain and operate those garages. Um, the city will license and grant parking stalls within the parking structures. So again, that, it was a revenue bond. And so that's how that formulation, it just clarifies how that's the steps that are taking place on the payment and ownership, um, and who has control. Uh, the last part is pretty simple. Basically, it just makes some changes to the invoice submission and payment for parking garages. Originally in those documents, um, specific individuals were named by name. Um, and we've just gone through and modified and changed those so that it's not a specific individual. It's, uh, positions, it just identifies the positions in the city who is responsible for that, um, and who they go through in the clearinghouse and reviews and checks as they go through. So the combined invoice will be mailed to the MBA, the Community Economic Development Director, Management Services Director, the comptroller and the city treasurer or their designees. Um, the MBA will notify the developer of the email addresses for the invoice submission. So we'll be taking care of all that. Uh, also states that the developer cannot invoice us for more than once a month. We can't just get one like weekly. We will take a monthly submission on those invoices. And then either the Community and Economic Development Director or the city treasurer will approve the invoice and forward it to Management Services Director uh, and the city comptroller for payment. So pretty standard. So a lot of the stuff, it doesn't really alter and amend a lot of stuff, but it provides clarity and gives us, um, a little bit clearer picture as we continue out through this project. For the funding mechanisms and what's taking place and the routes that they need to go. So the first couple of payment invoices that we had were a little bit, uh, lengthy in getting them processed because there was a lot of confusion and questions about some of the stuff that needed to happen. Um, and this clar- clarifies that. Um, and we've insta, we've kind of started doing some of this. And the last ones have gotten a lot smoother and quicker between us and the, and the developer. So, yeah.
Any questions for?
My last one.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just help me out. If we have the money secured, why can they not invoice this more than once a month? I mean, if we have the money there and they've done the work, it's done. Why can't we pay it?
It's just as standard, that's actually pretty standard on, on our construction projects is the just monthly, you do a monthly invoice. It just helps keep track of your invoicing, your payment, gives us time to actually go through, um, and check. Gives us time to actually go through um and check all the line items that are being requested, verify that the work is done. It just, it it's a cleaner process than trying to submit. Constantly and then always trying to keep up and catch up. Right. Any other questions? Sounds great. I think this this also comes to us October first. So. Good deal. Back to Justin. We've got the proposed budget amendment with the Wonder Block Bond Interest Income.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members. Um, so before you tonight is a proposed amendment to. The budget in the continental area to recognize what we estimate and working with our financial advisors, what we estimate is the interest that will be earned on these bonds. And adding that to the um, the, the, the funds available for the construction. And so the amount that we're that are being, that's estimated would be about four million dollars. So we'd like to um propose um amending that budget in the continental area to increase and add that four million dollars to the amount available um in that budget. So.
And and those, those uses you list as a project costs or debt service or and debt service, do we don't have a breakdown at this point of what that might look like?
No, not at this point. It'll be once the, when your completion with our portion of the spending.
When would that, when would that be?
Um, I'm not sure we'd have.
We can find that out before we present. That'd be great. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Perfect. All right. Up next, we have a council member initiative to discuss the Leicester Park and Lauren Far Pool. And Dave Graff, welcome to the hot seat.
Well, this is exciting. Thanks for the opportunity. I uh. I want to acknowledge that uh. First, there's a lot of people that have been involved in Lester Park. Before a seed was planted in me, and I want to thank Angela Chuburka for that. She invited me to a. Neighborhood meeting on a Wednesday night up at Lester Park and uh. I learned a lot about the passion that the community and the neighborhood has for Lester Park. And a seed was planted. And I also want to thank uh, Shalay uh, for her. Insight and communication and Eva Burnett is a a member of the community and represents Ogden Can. The, the city personnel are deeply involved in all of this too, from Justin Anderson and Ed Bridge and um. Uh, Monty Stewart uh, to the mayor who picked up the phone and called me a couple of weeks ago. And we had a conversation about uh, something that's become uh, a, a common. Consideration on the mayor's part, and that's the capacity that the city has to do or or our bandwidth, so to speak. And we had a nice, long discussion and he asked me if. I would consider just presenting. Improvements for one park. And that's what I'm gonna do uh, for the sake of Lester Park. Uh, and I'll talk a little bit further, not very much in depth about um. Lauren Farr and the pool over there, but we'll start with Lester Park. So named for Lester Herrick, he was elected mayor seven times. Uh, in those days in the eighteen hundreds, there were two year terms. Um, and Lester Park has been a part of uh, the city since the late eighteen hundreds. Uh, my proposal is to reinvigorate um, uh, Lester Park by using. ARPA money that the city still has available. Uh, this was the American Rescue Plan that followed uh, the pandemic. And uh, when I went to look at what the money was designated for, when the federal government. Uh, obligated the money for use, uh, it reads, quote, funding provided under ARPA provides unique opportunity for states and local governments. To make strategic investments in long-lived assets. And we've got a long-lived asset in Esther Lester Park. And uh, it needs to be reinvigorated and reinvested in because it's been a long time. I would like to invite some contingency funding for Lester or for Lauren Far Pool at the same time. We've got approximately nine million dollars in ARPA money that's been uh, set aside for. Uh, long-term strategic investments. Uh, I'd like to suggest that we place five million dollars in our uh, capital improvement uh, fund for Lester Park. And the remaining fourth million dollars and change in the Lauren Farr Pool uh, C I P. Um, knowing that if the budget comes in higher uh, for Lester Park than five million bucks. We can uh, talk about a transfer from Lauren Farr to uh, Lester Park. Um, we're not the only ones that are are doing this. I think it was an article that uh. Eric Davenport uh, pushed forward in a daily email about news that highlighted Detroit, Michigan, doing the same thing with ARPA money. Um, they're spending fourteen million dollars on um, their recreation department construction to renovate. Uh, one of their parks using ARPA money. So uh, this is a precedent that has been recognized or an opportunity recognized. And a precedent set in other places around the state. Lester Park is unique. I uh, look at Lester Park as Ogden's Central Park. Uh, and for several reasons, uh, you'll see uh, the park highlighted on the map that's up on the screen. Uh, it's accessible by more than just the neighborhood because it's on the O G X route. So neighboring uh, uh, folks can jump on the, on the bus. And uh, visit Lester Park. It's within the Niasmael's Art District, and we just got some insight into how important and how vigorous. Uh, Nine Rails is for the city. Uh, and the park is another asset that falls within that boundary. Uh, we're within walking distance of downtown to Lester Park, which I think is tremendous. Uh, in designating this as a central park for Ogden City. Um, and it's surrounded by a changing neighborhood and changing population in the neighborhood. As I've spent time. Up in that uh, area, uh, there are a lot of new residents and a lot of investment going into homes. In that area and the folks that are residing in that area deserve uh, a good public park that they feel safe in. And be and can be active in. Um, we've got a growing population around the neighborhood. We've got Sycamore Cove, the houses are going up. Uh, in fact, there's a couple of them framed and one being renovated right now. Uh, we've got uh, Capital Square. Uh, well underway in its construction, which will bring greater population. The townhomes over at Saint Joe's are also selling. And uh, being occupied and will bring new neighbors within walkable distance to uh, Lester Park. And then, of course, a wonder block we just talked about, we'll see increased density come to our downtown area. And they'll look to Lester Park as a place to recreate and relax and uh, and enjoy. Um, a number of years, well, within the last year, Eva, am I correct in that? You can just nod. That this survey was done two years ago and it was um commissioned by Weber State. And it asked uh, people why they weren't using the park. And they got eight hundred and thirty responses to this survey. Um, and the part of the answer is in this photograph, this guy. Who was photographed when Google was driving by as is not holding up two frisbees with five smiley faces on them, inviting a game of frisbee. Uh, instead, uh, the smiley faces are covering up a gesture. And I think the gesture is uh, kind of indicative of why this park isn't being uh, utilized to its full potential. Sixteen percent said it's unsafe in their minds. Uh, another eleven percent said it's unwelcoming. Um, ten and a half percent said it's outdated. So it's time for a refresh. Ideas to address safety. Uh, an updated playground would be good. Um, I just visited one and uh, as I went to visit my family. And uh, it was creative, it was engaging, the park was filled with uh. Moms and dads and grandparents and little kids just having a ball in a modern park. Uh, it was outstanding to to watch. Um, some other ideas for uh, uh, addressing safety is increased lighting within the park. A police call box was highlighted in this survey. Uh, security cameras also highlighted is important in the survey to address safety. Event signage would help uh, draw people into the park. And more people in the park, the safer the park is. A drinking fountain would be nice. Uh, ideas to activate the park. Um, a food truck night uh, will draw neighbors to a park as it's an event oriented. Uh, thing, entertainment in the park. It's been the case in the past where. Uh, there has been entertainment in the park. It's been a long time since that's been it. Maybe a weeknight farmer's market uh, where it's just fresh, fresh produce uh, within it. And uh, art in the park. Uh, if we're within the nine rails district, it just makes sense that. Uh, art would be part of the programming that would fall into the park. So you may recall that there was a big uh. Contest commissioned in twenty sixteen to redesign Lester Park. Uh, a blue ribbon was awarded. In twenty sixteen and nothing's been done. Uh, there have been several iterations uh, since then. Uh, but what has remained is an interest amongst the community to upgrade the park. Uh, we talked about the twenty sixteen concept and there was another uh, redesign that came to light in twenty twenty three. Uh, it's continued to be penciled uh, through the years. I would like to suggest that we really make an effort to move this along without a lot of. Continued delay. And the asterisks just remind me to kind of share a podcast that I listened to uh, where um. Senator Brian Schatz of Hawaii was interviewed and uh, really one of the things that he talked very much about is. Building confidence in the public that the government can deliver on some things. So in our example, we've got a, a blue ribbon awarded in twenty sixteen to reinvent uh, Lester Park. And eight years later, nothing has been done. I think that the community deserves attention on this and prompt attention to create the right park in a timely manner. Um, so that we can, we can deliver for the community. I think improving this part uh, meets. Our strategic directives as a city for economic development. To improve our city's image and reputation, I think it improves public safety for the neighborhood that is east central. Uh, and it also um, can uh, support public recreation. So economic development. Um, we learned from the mayor's uh, group that followed him here from Harvard. That seventy percent of the people working in Ogden. Leave when their workday is over. And with them, they take the paycheck that they may have earned. At some of our five largest employers. What would it be like if they wanted to stay and live in Ogden? Public amenities like a great park create a stickiness uh, for a city and then generate um. Some economic development. Quality parks and amenities are part of placemaking and placemaking is part of where people want to be. And if Ogden is where people want to be, it's good for us. Um, the city's image and reputation, we improve the overall simi- uh, image and reputation of the city. By having great amenities is basically what that says. Uh, community safety. Uh, community safety, we want people out and about in our city, uh, creating community and knowing their neighbors. Uh, and and encouraging people. Uh, a, a busy park, I haven't found anybody to disagree with this. I heard it that Wednesday night at the park. A busy park is a safer park. Um, I'm open to hearing something different, but I think if we can activate this park and put people in the park, the negative influences in the park can be moved to the margins. Uh, community safety again. In Ogden overall, from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, January to June, crime fell eighteen percent. Except in one area of the city. And I think by bringing some focus to the east central neighborhood, rather than in increases in uh. In crime in the east central neighborhood, we can see it diminish as well. Uh, recreation, uh, it's important that we provide and maintain recreational facilities. And we connect commi- community and meaningful experiences by creating uh, recreation opportunities within the city. Uh, and it's part of our, our job as a catalyst to create youth recreation opportunities. Uh, council guidelines and goals are also supported by uh. Improving parks and natural amenities. Uh, recreation master plans so that we can bring infrastructure to provide some facilities for recreation to our community. Uh, consider additional recreational assets and Lester Park is a potential for that. It also provokes uh, resident engagement and uh. Cleanliness to the neighborhood and and safety in the neighborhood. So strategic plans, this is the final year of our five-year strategic plan, and we've got an opportunity to kind of cap it with an exclamation point by improving. Uh, Lester Park, I think. Uh, and it's the, it's the right thing to do for the neighborhood, the city deserves it, and we've got the capital to do it. Um, I want to thank. You all for the opportunity to make this presentation and uh. For the consideration of all this, there'll be more discussion on it. The ask tonight is for uh. A, a budget amendment to come from the administration uh, to allocate these dollars to the respective uh, capital improvement plans. The mayor asked for an opportunity to uh, say a few words on this as well. So I'd like to invite Mayor Nadalski to come up and share a couple of comments.
Man, just make a comment.
Sure.
Just want to thank you so much, Dave, for your passion around this um, initiative. I mean, um, it's challenging because Lester Park is in the district that I represent, obviously, and yours abouts the, the park. And so I appreciate you. Being engaged and coming up with this idea. I agree that the time is definitely right for the investment, although I do know that over. The past years, we have had other priorities, like there's a brand new playground going right now at Big D, um, which I thought was really cool to look at. I saw that update today. Um, but I do really appreciate your engagement so much on the project. Thank you.
Welcome, Mayor. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Graff. Where to begin? What, what I asked for was an opportunity to co-present a project that I think is beneficial for the community. What I asked for was an opportunity to set realistic expectations so that we as an administration can achieve those expectations. There is a long past. Of setting expectations and not letting up to them. I do fear that the presentation. As shared, sets some similar expectations. The discussions that we had were along the lines of. Rather than shooting for perfection. Not letting perfection get in the way of excellence. And I think that there are some really great opportunities for us to help this community in this neighborhood. Activate this space and to do it in a way. That is organic, that's natural, that brings people together. That helps unite neighborhoods and neighbors. In common space. I think there's opportunities for us to align. Funds that we've already set aside to make improvements that we're already planning on doing. And to set clear expectations for the timelines for which we would do that. We did talk about Lauren for our pool. I love the pool and want to help. Uh, facilitate its protection and restoration as well. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe in the order of. Million or more in recent improvements to help. Increase its life expectancy. That was why I asked that the focus be on the park. I think there's a great opportunity for us to focus on some low hanging fruit at Lester Park. To focus on a active uh, pathway and trail around the park. I think there's an opportunity for us to improve lighting and to. Build the playground and leverage the funds that we have to match with with other grant opportunities. I do want just to make really clear that. We do have funds for long-term assets through the ARPA funds. Um, I would like the opportunity to talk about other needs in the community as well. Such as Union Station as a priority. I would love to get to the point where we put five million dollars into Lester Park. I just want to make it really clear that. I think that's a long-term goal and that in the short term, we should be. Making sure that we deliver on the expectations from the community that we, that we hear from the neighborhood. I was really heartened by the feedback we got from the neighborhood in our community uh, meeting. And what we heard was activate the space. That's something that we're excited to do. I know that our team has met with Ava and others. In ways that the neighborhood can do it without tripping triggers into events that would require insurance, et cetera. But also um, our team is eager to find opportunities for alignment with the neighborhood and to activate um, from a, a city. from a city event level and helping with the permitting, et cetera, to do bigger events in that space, too, as early as this fall before snow flies so that we're not waiting and not delivering on those expectations in the long term. And I'd like to make sure that we're setting our team up for success come the spring so that we have a scale of capital that they can make sure they deliver on that meets the neighborhood expectation so that we no longer fall short of the expectation. It's really important to me that we build a stronger relationship with people, with the neighborhood and neighbors so that they can trust that when we when we ask for their input, that we put it into place, and that when we commit to do something, that we do it and that we're not committing to something that's unrealistic like we've done in the past. So I do ask for the phased approach for implementation and that that phased approach is done in lockstep with the neighborhood and with leadership from the council as well. So thank you for your leadership in the neighborhood. Councilmember Graff and Councilmember Jabirka, appreciate your engagement and helping us to make those inroads with the neighbors and helping us find ways that we can deliver on reasonable and well-designed, well-thought-out plans with the help of local expertise on the matter. Thank you.
Councilmember Blair, do you have a comment?
I just had a question while we're considering this. Yeah, I don't know. Could we get a list of CIPs for Lester Park and and Lauren Farr? Just and then if we could, if I mean, if on there, it would say that those have been money has been appropriated or not, so we kind of see where we're at. And then also, Councilmember Graff talked a little bit about the park redesign. And I don't know if any money's been put towards those improvements or those those ideas also, or if those are part of the CIP. So I just have a couple. I mean, those are just a couple of things that would help me move forward and look at what we can fund.
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say thanks to Councilmember Graff. It's a great presentation, very insightful, and you worked forward beautifully with this. Just a couple of questions. Is there any study that's been done on inner-city parks like this one? You alluded to one in your presentation, but I'm wondering about an inner-city park that's been rehabilitated like you're proposing with Lester Park and what the success has been in that neighborhood, something that we can draw from in that's already been accomplished and done in another community?
Not that I'm aware of.
I would definitely give an example, just because I do walk in the neighborhood quite a bit. Since Liberty Park has been renovated, now attached with the school, you know, just over on Monroe between was it twenty?
Twenty-first, twenty-second.
Yeah, something like that. I never look at the street. I mean, there's just a marked difference in when you walk through that park now with all the activation that's been put there. Obviously, the school playground is there and accessible. But then there's the basketball courts, and then there's a big space for soccer. And then there's the tennis, or I guess sometimes he leaves it for pickleball. There's a little path. I mean, there's just always people there doing activities, and so it has a very different feel than Lester Park still does, even though Lester Park is a beautiful park. I spend quite a bit of time there with my dogs, but it just has a very different feeling because there's all different people doing all different kinds of things all over Liberty Park. So I guess giving my own personal experience there, and it was it was quite a bit different before it was changed and like connected with the school grounds and everything. It's just a very different environment.
And I only have a limited experience with Pioneer Park in Salt Lake City, but that was recently rehabbed as well. And it's a it feels totally different than it did eight or ten years ago as a result of this redesign.
I would say, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. I watched Monroe change. And 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 kudos to the the neighbors around Lester Park. I don't mean anything different. But I think when you go in and you make improvements like this to a park or to a city asset, like you're talking about creating a neighborhood park, that the neighborhood gets much bigger, right? The neighborhood that uses that park gets much, much broader, much bigger, which I think is what we're trying to do, is bring more of our residents to that central park in Ogden, which is great. So, yeah, I yeah, I don't know if we have any data, but I mean, I've watched Monroe Park, and it amazes me from watching limited to few people use that park to now it's full all day, every day, throughout the day, which is great.
Well, honestly, I don't want to give a misconception that there's not people in Lester Park because people use the park. There's just limited uses for it, I guess I would say, at this time. And then there's not really a bench besides sitting by the library, or now that the tables have been moved, which has been really a big improvement, honestly. You can sit in those around the park, but you know, there's literally just the playground in the middle. And then there's no, you know, there's nothing, you would maybe play a game or sit on a blanket or something, but there's not really anything else you would do there besides walk through or something.
Just to follow-up comment, I support the concept. I think it's a great idea, and I just I'm all in. My only concern would be that I just would not like it to fall into blight again or to be unused. And I understand that when we make something nice, people are going to come. That's such a that's a beautiful concept, and it's great, and it's it's an excellent investment. I just want to know how the future would play out. If there's some way we can look into changes that we've seen somewhere else, and is that something we could ask staff to help us with to look into other parks that have been rehabilitated?
So you're talking about like setting aside maintenance money or?
No, I'm talking about the future of the park and the usage of the park. So you take an area like Lester Park, and this is a great idea. I just, you know, we're considering making a huge investment into it, and so and I'm all for that. I just want to know what it's going to be like in ten years or in five years and make sure that the usage continues on and the blight doesn't creep back into the park that has been there before. And I don't want to be negative by saying that, but I just want to make sure it's usable and and that the community is proud of the investment that we're going to make into the park and continues to use it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I I mean, I think part of that could be maintenance money, which is something that we've not been really good at doing consistently for other projects. Buildings, for example, but also maybe it's just a plan for activation for, you know, five-year plan or something. I don't know. I don't know that we've ever done anything like that. I'd have to defer to Ed or Monty.
Thanks very much.
Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Blair, follow-up?
Well, yeah, that's my question. So what is our next, like, what?
Yeah, okay.
What's what's our roadmap? What's our plan?
No, I was just going to say, I really like your suggestion of looking at the CIP list to see where, what projects are there. And, you know, I I think a phased approach could be well, could be done done well. We just would want to know what that phase approach looks like. And, you know, as far as setting an expectation, you know, it seems like we've done a lot of different designs and concept things, but then nothing has happened. And so it's unfortunately the wrong expectation now that nothing's getting done. So we need to, I think we need to create a plan on that. It was interesting when we did the time capsule in the Union Station, one of the one of the pieces that was brought out was a Chamber of Commerce Chamber of Commerce visit Ogden area piece and highlighted on that was make sure you visit Lester Park as part of your trip to Ogden, which is which is kind of cool to think about from the history. But, you know, we all kind of like, oh, really? That was that was the thing to do. So anyway. But, yeah, so what are the next steps? I think that's we need to come up with a plan and work that through. Councilmember Harry?
I want to kind of go back a little bit in the Wayback Machine and talk about that contest that that happened in twenty sixteen, I believe it was said. I remember we did have a lot of discussion about that and law enforcement weighed in and said, you know, some of these things can't work because we can't enforce it. But and I think some of the some of the poo-pooing is what stalled it. It seems like it kind of felt like that to me. That was just one of the issues, though. The other was is it was, I think it was a contest without any money to back it up. But but now we got the money, and I I totally am on board that we use this ARPA funds for things that are going to last a long time. And parks and recreation are some of those kind of things that that, you know, we 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 zone out the right thing, but we do need to maintain it to use those things. But as far as the the contest, I mean, I don't think there was a winner. Shelley probably knows. She was she was a contestant on the thing. I know that there was there was some. Yeah, I remember. I remember that there was some wiggling around, though, about it. But anyhow, the the point is, is those aspects that were designed and 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 got merit, maybe those things turn into the CIP projects, you know. And and that's how we approached this thing because I don't think we had the concept when the contest was going on that, okay, the winner's going to get this new park. You know, I don't think that was really ever intended. At least it it didn't work out that way. I don't whether maybe that was. So anyway. Yeah, I I think we we just look at those elements, see the ones that will really enhance that park, turn them into CIPs and and kind of approach it that way. You know, all this discussion's been really good.
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only thing I would say to that, too, I guess we're running out of time, but is that I also would like to know what the priorities, like what the next perks are that we're on the list to do, too, because I do want to be fair about that as well, because I know that recreation has a plan about when we redo different areas, too. So I think that should play into the discussion like we've talked about before. Downtown does get a lot of focus, and I certainly am biased toward downtown, so, you know. I've got a lot of biases tonight, so.
All right, well.
Just one last, one last comment on my part. First of all, there are a number of community members that attended in silent support tonight, so thank you for coming down. I also kind of got the feeling in that Wednesday night meeting that there was a an energy amongst that neighborhood that to go to Sean's thoughts around how do we build and then maintain momentum, and we heard about it in the Arts District and and down at Union Station, too, activation, activation, activation. It's a plan. It doesn't just happen. And I think that the neighborhood is a potential resource for community activation of that park going forward. And I think that with attention to that, we ensure that the the park stays active, stays engaged in the community, and we protect that asset and its value as a result of its activation. So that would be part of my thinking as we we come together as a community to talk about what that park becomes.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. And thanks for those who did come. Appreciate that. We're going to adjourn and pick things back up at six o'clock.